Winona Municipal Band continues to be a model for other communities, whereas the Winona Municipal Band connects with the residents of the Winona area, having provided music and entertainment for the past 100 years and will for the next 100 years or more. Now therefore, I Mayor Mark Peterson hereby proclaim July 22nd, 2015 as Winona Municipal Band Day. And it will be fun on Wednesday, July 22nd, exactly 100 years later, to be able to read this proclamation on Wednesday night at 8:00 when the band concert begins. I want to thank the Winona Municipal Band and the committee that have worked very hard this year, providing a wonderful year, a wonderful season of great programs and great music and just a lot of fun. And I don't know if anybody could do a Municipal Band centennial celebration any better than what we've done here in Winona this summer. And thank you very much for everything.
Turn the air off, we're prepared here.
We're going to be distributing these to all city employees tomorrow. Very good, thank you. I'd also like to mention John Latch Week is this week. It's a time when, as a community, I think we should and do celebrate the accomplishments and the contributions of really one of Winona's greatest citizens, John Latch. Councilman Borzjakowski came prepared with his John Latch bow tie. It's good to see. There are activities pretty much every day. Tomorrow night, there's a program at the History Center, a free program at 7:00. Mike Kennedy is going to be doing a program on John Latch. And Wednesday, I know there's free admission to the History Center all day in honor of John Latch. Thursday night, there's a boat trip led by Fran Edstrom focused on John Latch. Friday, John Latch Day at Westfield Golf Course, which is a public golf course and was a contribution by John Latch, the land. And Saturday morning, at the Farmer's Market, we'll be having activities down there focused on kids and some fun things, and a free track bike is going to be given away. So I plan on taking that in as well. I have, we have a visitor here tonight, Tim Penny, the president of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund. And I think I said that wrong. Is it? Okay, it is the Initiative Fund. For a second, I thought they changed names. Tim is here, he wants to give us an update on the Initiative Fund.
Thank you.
We'll give him a few minutes to do that.
Thank you, that's exactly why I'm here, and I do appreciate the opportunity every year to come back and give you an update. Am I running short? Did I give somebody two?
I have one.
Are we there? Okay, okay. This is the time of year I know that cities and counties are beginning to put together their budgets, and it's typically the time of year that I stay plenty busy in addition to my other work assignments at the Initiative Foundation, providing an update to local elected officials about the work that we do within the region. As most of you know from my past presentations here before the council, our foundation has been around 29 years, coming up on our 30th anniversary in 2016. We serve a 20-county region in south-central, southeastern Minnesota. The packet that you have in front of you has a copy of our annual report, and on the back of that, you'll see a color-coded map of the region, which identifies, just at a glance, how our resources are spread across the region, and we update that map each year. There's also a fact sheet in there that's more specific to the work that we've done in recent years here in Winona and Winona County. I want to just highlight a few things tonight. We are roughly a $5 million organization, and each year, we allocate about 40% of our resources to early childhood initiatives, and about half of our resources go to entrepreneurial initiatives, those who are two main areas of work. The remaining dollars in our budget are allocated to support now 23 small-town community funds. St. Charles is in the process of coming onboard as one of our more recent community funds, but we have 22 other communities across the region that we help. And we're in conversation right now with a few towns, and may have some additional community funds under our umbrella as time goes forward. But in terms of our early childhood work, we provide that support in a variety of ways. Here in Winona and the broader Winona County area, in the last year or two, we have provided two AmeriCorps slots. These are young people that work as teachers' aides in Head Start sites and other facilities. One of the people here has been dividing their time between Ridgeway and a Head Start site here in town. They focus primarily on kids in those preschool classrooms that have social and emotional challenges, helping the teachers get them ready for, the school helps them get their ready for kindergarten. Just the cost of that, or the savings frankly, to the early childhood site is in excess of $30,000 because you'd have to pay someone. And all of that is provided through us in the allocation of these AmeriCorps personnel across the region. We only have 20 slots, I wish we had a lot more, but we've had one or two of those slots here in Winona for a long time. We also provide a number of books to groups and organizations across the region. Ridgway Community Schools and Troy Valley Opportunity Council have gotten books from our partnership in the recent past. We provide incentive grants as well. Winona State University Children's Center, Winona Area Public Schools, Community Ed, and a chance to grow another program here in town have received incentive grants from us to expand and enhance the early childhood work. And then a separate book partnership is done in partnership with Quanis Clubs, and two of the Quanis Clubs here in town receive several hundred books from us each year, and they are then assigned to go out and be reading mentors and partner with Head Start sites and other early childhood sites across the community. We've also provided some pre-K alignment grants to Winona Public Schools, as well as St. Charles Public Schools. And Winona Area Catholic Schools received a Young Explorer Computer from us, which they use in their preschool classrooms. So those are among the early childhood resources that we brought to Winona and the broader Winona area in the last year or two. On the entrepreneurial side, we have an AmeriCorps Vista slot here in town, it's been in place for a few years now. They've worked primarily with the county on community gardens and worked with minority populations, new immigrant populations, to help them with business training. We also did a community growth initiative with the community of Winona, the Chamber of Commerce, about a year, a little more than a year ago. Resulted in creating a downtown business app, as well as a grant that helps support the Live at the Levy Initiative. We've surprised, supported an entrepreneurial grant to Project Fine, helped them develop a .com site that they use to work with new immigrants here in the community to help get them on an entrepreneurial path. And we partnered with Port Authority on a business loan to Gypsoil Pelletized, which has just been approved within the last six months or so. So those are among the resources that we've brought to the county. Again, we are about a $5 million a year organization. We have to spread these resources across 20 counties, but I think that color-coded map again shows that we have not neglected Winona and Winona County in recent years. We try to be a good partner and a good collaborator with others that are working on these issues. I always say that our resources simply complement, supplement what others are already doing, and we try, again, to be a good partner in that regard. We do raise about 10% of our budget locally. That does come from cities, counties, corporations, banks, and individuals, but that means 90% of our budget is outside resources that we bring into the region, so we think that's a pretty good return on investment for Southern Minnesota. So with that, thank you for allowing me to give an update. I know you've got other items on your agenda, so I'd be happy to deal with any questions if there are any.
Any questions from council? I guess not, I think you covered it.
Easy to add to this one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tim.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idon.
Here.
Borzjakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is an appeal of the decision of the Board of Adjustment by Chase Hoffman for the property at 151 East Third Street.
I'll declare the public hearing open and outline the process here. The appellant, Chase Hoffman, will be given an opportunity to be heard by the city council. He'll have up to 20 minutes to do that. He will then take questions from the city council, if there are any. And then there will be an opportunity for other interested persons not already having spoken to be heard, provided however that such testimony is limited to the issue on appeal and does not repeat testimony already presented. Two minutes per person, not to exceed 10 minutes cumulatively. And then city staff will give a Board of Adjustment presentation on the variance request, which can take up to 10 minutes. And then there'll be questions from city council, members of city staff, and then I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll hear from our legal representative, our city attorney, and then the council will deliberate. So, Mr. Hoffman, state your name and address, and you've got up to 20 minutes if you wish.
Okay, Chase Hoffman, resident 23901 East Springs Valley Road, Winona, Minnesota. The subject property is 151 East Third, and I'm going to take much less than 20 minutes. So, in June, I went before the Board of Adjustments, and I think everyone knows the variance I was looking for and that I was denied. I feel that I didn't properly inform the Board of Adjustments with my plans. Part of that was to fulfill the plan, involves consulting with designers, engineers, historical consultants, and I didn't want to undertake that part of the cost of the project until I had the variance in hand. So I wasn't as prepared as I should have been for some of their answers. And I also believe they had interpreted parts of the comprehensive plan a little bit differently than I was interpreting that. So I provided a document when I filed the appeal, which I hope everyone's had a chance to read, so I'm not going to read through the document, but I will hit each of the high points that are related to the questions that have to be asked to determine if what I'm asking for is agreeable or not to both Board of Adjustments and the city council. Number one is the variance in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. So the ordinance itself is, on the back half of first-floor commercial properties downtown in the Commercial District, within 100 feet of a public parking lot, no residential units are allowed. And the purpose of that ordinance, I had a little help from city staff in understanding that there was two concerns. One would be from the parking lot from the cars, and a commercial interest in that space would likely generate far more traffic than apartments. It would be at different times of the day, but certainly far more vehicle traffic. And the concern, second concern, is the privacy of the folks that have doors or windows facing the alley, and the amount of foot traffic and vehicle noise and headlights that would be potentially disrupting that. So with respect to that, the variance, the first floor of this property has no penetrations onto the alley. It actually butts right up to the alley, so it would be dangerous to put any doorways, and there's currently no windows, and I don't, I'm not planning to put any windows facing the alley for those privacy concerns. Another concern with, related to the privacy, but not necessarily to the vehicle noise and traffic, is folks walking by on the sidewalk, looking into somebody's living room, watching them eat breakfast or watch TV at night. And that concern was brought up by the Board of Adjustments, and I believe that needs to be addressed through the design process with, you know, I'm not a designer, but I know there's ways that they have, there's multiple ways, like frosted glass, for example, or some other window treatments, among others, that would have to be employed for that purpose. Item two is the variance consistent with the comprehensive plan. I've read both the Downtown Revitalization Plan and the short piece within the comprehensive plan that the Downtown Revitalization Plan gets that section. And from the short quote I put in my letter, I do believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. And back in '07, the people that wrote that may not have specifically envisioned this property, but I think they would have been in agreement with granting this variance request. Does the, number three, does the proposal put the property to use in a reasonable manner? I feel it does. The overarching issue I have is, I have to do something with the building, and I can't leave it like it is, and I have to make the project go forward. Right now with the, I know this isn't about economics, but it is. To make this a viable project, I have to be able to rent the rehabilitated space. And for a bank to be willing to extend credit to me, and I'm looking at bringing in partners to help realize this, but for that project to have that credibility, I need to be able to rent this space. So I believe that allowing that use of that part of the property is the only way to put this property to use in a reasonable manner. Unique circumstances, similar to the one above, life happened, the property's sitting there today needing some action, and I think it's in everyone's best interest to see that building go forward and be rehabilitated, as opposed to the alternative. And will the variance, if granted, retain the essential character of the locality? I believe so. The very strong possibility, if I don't get this, is I can't make the project go forward, and the time it would take for me to market it to someone else who thinks they can make it go forward without this, it would be, there'd be too much of a lag in time, and it would sit that way for another winter, and might ultimately be condemned, or may come down on its own under another Winona winter. And that's all I've got.
Okay, well, I'm sure the council probably has some questions. I have one, I guess I'd like to start with. If you would receive our support here tonight, what's your timeline for moving forward on this project?
So, we are going down a path of starting work on the project in September. And by starting work, there's, the devil's always in the details, and every time I talk to another party that's part of this process, I end up adding a few more weeks to the schedule. That part of the work would, in September, would start with likely wrapping the exterior with some sort of support scaffolding, and then going in and removing the rest of the interior floors that are still there and the debris that still needs to be taken out. The goal would be to have the roof on by the end of November or before the winter really sets in, kind of already right at the limit of practicality with regards to that. And then we would expect to have a certificate of occupancy next summer, ideally to coincide with the, I'll say the Winona apartment rental market, which correlates to the school here.
Thank you. Phil?
Mr. Hoffman, what percentage of your building was rental versus commercial before the fire? And what would it be if this project moves forward?
It was 50/50 before, 5,000 square feet up and 5,000 square feet down.
So they were separated by the floor, in other words, commercial at the bottom and apartments?
Correct, yes.
How many apartments were at the top?
There were seven.
And with this proposal, you'd have how many apartments?
So there was an attic area above the second floor, and we're exploring putting a couple of apartments in that space. So the numbers would probably be three or four apartments there, and we would, I think the, so there's design guidance, it says like exterior window placement and things like that on the second floor. I think the number the architect penciled out was eight units on the second floor, and then a number of four units in the first, and other four units on the first floor if this variance is approved.
So a total of 12 then?
A total of 12, and we're exploring the feasibility of putting some additional units in the basement, but that course of action hasn't been set yet.
Now, in some of the material I read, I think you were looking at having the main entrance to the apartment areas on Walnut Street, correct?
Correct, yeah. So there's always been two entrances to that, to the upstairs, one off of Third Street at the east end of the building, or east end of the narrow part of the building, and the other just about to the alley on the Walnut Street side. And that Walnut Street entrance, when I went before the Board of Adjustments, I had two requests. One was the, the one that was denied, and the other was to expand that entrance so I could service an elevator there, make that a handicap accessible entrance, and a little bit wider. So, and I don't know if this is part of your question, but that same entrance would also serve as the entry point for all of the potential first-floor apartments.
Okay, what kind of, how much square footage you mean? I guess this is a speculative question, or maybe not. Do you have commitments for the commercial space that would be in the remodeled facility?
No commitments.
Okay.
No, I talked to my former tenant, and there's some interest in doing a more of a restaurant than the straight bar rental that they had before, but they're going to be reluctant to make a commitment in terms of signing a lease or even really getting too excited about it until I know that I have a viable project going forward.
Thank you.
George?
Mr. Hoffman, right now in this area that you want to make apartments, what was it? It wasn't apartments before, was it?
No, it was, the space has, as far back as I can remember, it's always been a bar, and the same renter, I have four different renters in that space, but they've always had the entire space.
Okay, but it wasn't living quarters before?
No, it wasn't.
Now, we talk about the alley here, and maybe Carlos, maybe you'll have to help out with this one. It shows there's 20 feet there right now, and we need to have 100, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, now, the Third Street Liquor Parking Lot, which you know is owned by Kenny there, as reading this, this is also considered to be a public lot as well?
Correct, George, it would be considered to be a public parking lot. The parking lot we're referencing is in this general location here, which is behind 151 East Third Street. And the definition of a public parking lot in our zoning code is an open area, other than a street or public way, used for parking of automobiles and available to the public, whether for a fee, free, or as an accommodation for clients or customers. In this case, this parking lot is signed for customers, so it does technically fall under that definition of a public parking lot.
Okay, now, let's say this was not a parking lot. It was another building there, or it could be a building in the future. How would this play into it?
If it was not a parking lot, if it was not a public parking lot, if it was a building, this variance wouldn't even come into play. If the lot was used just for employees or for residents of an adjacent business or residential building, then it would not fall under the definition of a public parking lot. The key thing is, is that it's signed for customer parking.
But it's privately owned?
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Hoffman? I guess not. Thank you. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak to the subject? State your name and address.
Hi, my name's Mark Harris. I live at 23923 County Route 7. And I would like to, I think Chase's project would be good for that building, I would say, the structure. I don't know what else, you know, hopefully get the money to rebuild it as historically correct as you can also. What I would like to say, though, he complies with all the U.S. Department of Interior Rehab standards, and have someone with the professional qualifications to oversee that job, since that's what the Department of Interior requires. And I think the window issue, you know, people seeing in the windows, whatever, they should be able to handle that with like window treatments and stuff like that. I think if they come up with the right design, it should work. And also, I think on our block, I own the property, right, 161, 163 East Third, so I'm on this same block, and as far as I know, there's already residential use in a couple buildings on our same block, and if you go up and down the alley, there's even more. I think it'd be a good correction.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else here wishes to speak to this topic? Anybody else wish to speak? Last chance, anybody else wish to speak? All right. Now we'll have city staff. Carlos, you want to do your presentation?
Union mayor and council, the appeal to the Hoffman variance tonight, it's already part of your agenda packets, but the request is to locate a residential use within 20 feet of a public parking lot within the central business district core, and the requirement is 100 feet. So this is the map you just saw, the subject property, 151 East Third Street, and the public parking lot, that's the subject of the variance, is in this general location here. On June 17th, 2015, the board heard this request, and after a public hearing, made a decision to deny the request for the setback variance. Based on the minutes of the meeting, the board gave the following answers for their criteria that are required to grant a variance. First of all, in order to grant a variance for the request, it has to be found that the variance is consistent with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. In this instance, the minutes stated that the Board of Adjustment determined that the variance was not in harmony because a building is proposed directly across an alley from a public parking lot, and that there are windows proposed on the rear of the building, facing the alley in the parking lot. As a result, the safety and the comfort of future residents would be impacted. Now, the petitioner just said that there are not windows to be placed on the alley. So this may have been a miscommunication among the board members when the hearing was occurring, but according to the minutes, the windows are one of the reasons that they said that the request is not consistent with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. The second criteria is that the variance has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. In this case, the minutes stated that the board determined the request was not consistent with the comprehensive plan, since the plan promotes continued code and zoning enforcement to enhance the livability of neighborhoods. So what the board thought in this specific instance was that because the comprehensive plan promotes livability and residential use adjacent to a public parking lot would impact the future residents potentially of that building, that it is not in line with the comprehensive plan. The third criteria is that the variance puts the property to use in a reasonable manner, and in this criteria, the board said that it would put the property to use in a reasonable manner, given nearby buildings also have residential units that are accessible in the rear from an alley. The fourth criteria, there are unique circumstances, the property not created by the property owner. In this instance, the board cited the recent fire that occurred at the site. Five, the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. In this case, the board determined that the variance would not alter the character of the locality, because nearby buildings also have residential units in the rear accessible from the alley, and the owner of the property is planning to retain the historic character And finally, the request is not based solely on economic considerations. If the Board has affirmative answers to findings three through five, then this one's automatic, and in this case, it was automatically met. So tonight, there's three options in front of the Council. You could affirm the Board of Adjustment decision by adopting the Board of Adjustment's findings, denying the variance. You could also amend the Board's decision, or you could overrule the decision of the Board of Adjustment. Under this option, following hearing and deliberations, it's recommended that Council adopt a motion to postpone further consideration and direct staff to bring proposed findings supporting the variance to the next meeting. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Carlos?
Just clarification, Carlos, you said that there, there was an apparent miscommunication with the Board of Adjustment, the soup, or a fact that there are windows, and now there are no windows.
Sure, and Chase, could you confirm that?
Yeah, I, I don't recall.
Yeah, come up to the microphone.
We didn't specifically discuss the location for addition of any windows. The only discussion we had to that end was the enlarged doorway on the Walnut Street sidewalk side, so I think there was maybe a sin of omission on my part by not specifying that we would, would not be adding windows there.
So again, there's no windows on the back of the building?
Not on the first floor.
Not on the first floor?
There's, it's somewhere on the second.
Okay.
Has there been any letters from Mr. Sebenhour?
I'm sorry?
Sebenhour, with regard to his objection at the Board of Hearing regarding utilization of his parking lot?
At the Board level, he did speak about that, and he did have some objections, but I didn't see him here tonight to bring those forward to the Council, and Monica, the notice for the hearing would have gone out to people adjacent, correct?
If he owns the property, any, any property owner within a certain distance received a public hearing notice.
Mr. Sebenhour has made his opposition to this very known to me.
George?
In regards to windows, now you said there would be no windows, aren't, are there not windows required, or are these going to be windows at different height, or how exactly, you have to have so many windows for, what, for bedroom, or for living room, whatever it may be?
We'd have to work with the building official on that, but if there are no windows on the rear, the alley side, that's something I think that you could work with.
Mr. Hoffman, you, you stated at some point that you intend to use the tax credits for this project?
Correct.
So the tax credits would, you would be following the guidelines, I know that Mr. Harris brought up the, his concern about the, following the Secretary of the Interior standards, and those would be closely followed if you worked with the tax credits, so.
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Al, I think I saw your hand. Yeah, let me ask Carlos, this definition of a public parking lot that you brought up, it intrigues me. When, is that part of the original zoning code for the city, do you know? Has it been amended?
It was amended. That is something that I believe City Planner Mark Muller took a look at in the 1980s, and that's when it was added.
Those are the definitions of a public parking lot?
The definition of the public parking lot that exists in city code, that's when it was added, in the 1980s.
Okay, thank you. George?
Carlos, I've read somewhere in here where the project he wants to do, that it would not be acceptable in the back with, because of the windows, but it is permissible, like during the middle of a block, why is the difference of that?
I think the main thing had to do with the traffic from the parking lot when the ordinance was established, so if you're going to have people walking on the sidewalk, that could also be, that could also have an impact on residents, so if there are treatments that are done to the windows that are facing Walnut Street, I think that would definitely help preserve privacy for the future residents of the building. If there's some kind of sound enhancements to, to prevent some of the noise coming through from outside, that might help as well.
So he could have apartments in the middle of the block?
He can't ha, yes, he could, he just can't have apartments in the rear one half of the building within 100 feet of a par, public parking lot.
Well, so the, the city code doesn't allow apartments in the front half of the building at all, right?
Not in this area of downtown.
Right. So I think that, was that your question, George?
Well, I said, but he could, but it said you could have them in the middle of, of the block, or middle of the building, or?
That, that's a good question. The, the way the code reads, you have to have the, the front half commercial, and the rear half can be residential, doesn't say anything about the middle, so.
Where would the public, public parking be for 14 units?
The code doesn't require parking in this area of town, at all.
Other questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Carlos. If there aren't any other questions of staff, I'll close the public hearing and ask our city attorney, Mr. Hood, to speak.
Mayor and Council, you are all pretty familiar with this process at this point, so I don't have a lot to add. What I would add, for the Council's benefit, is that we do have proposed findings, effect conclusions, and order in the packet. In the back of that, Carlos mentioned the options that are available, the listing of the criteria, obviously, to approve a variance, you have to affirmatively approve each of the criteria, or those have to be proven up. In this particular case, four of those criteria were determined by the Board of Adjustment to have been met by Mr. Hoffman to his proposal. The only two that weren't met were the, that this is not in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, and not consistent with comprehensive plan. The one thing I guess I would like to add here is that in the event that you were to overturn the decision of the Board of Adjustment and make findings on those two items, you can establish reasonable conditions as well. So for example, you could establish a condition, if you determine that this is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, to say that along the alley there can be windows, so you can establish those conditions. Any questions?
Guess not, thank you. Well, how we can deliberate? I guess, I'd like to start just by saying I appreciate Mr. Hoffman and his interest in going forward with this building. I think it's a key building in our downtown area. I think the rehab of this building will be an asset to our downtown. I'm very pleased to know that he would be using the tax credits, because I know that tax credits have resulted in a very good project in the end. I know if we can use the Latch Building, the Kupiatz Building is one example that's going on right now, and the work that's being done there is of the highest quality. You know, the day of the fire, the next morning, you and I talked, and I said if I can do anything to help you, I'd like to, and I guess I'm going to support this, because I think that it's the right thing to do to get this project moving forward. I'm not concerned, especially knowing there aren't any windows in the, in the alley back there, and, you know, I, I don't quite understand public parking lots, I guess I think of a public parking lot as something that the city owns, and not a, sort of a private lot for a liquor store, it's so much a public lot. I think it's a good project, and I, I would very much like to see this happen. That's my comment. Others want to speak? Through a motion?
Well, I, I'm just saying, I cannot support this, as much as I would love to see the building preserved and brought, I have a real serious issue with lack of parking in the area, and, and I know that, you know, people are going to park somewhere, and it's going to be, and, and all, I feel if we approve this, all we're going to do is transfer the nightmare of policing winter parkers to the other property owners, and create an issue there that we're going to have to deal with down the road, because having my own parking lot in the, in relatively reasonable proximity to this, I have that problem now. And, and the reason I bought the property, I bought it, is because it had a parking, and I had to dedicate that space for the parking lot.
George?
Carlos, what if he owned that parking lot? Let's say Chase owned that parking lot.
If Chase owned that parking lot, and it was only for employees, then it would be okay, but if it were, if he owned that parking lot, even if he owned it, and it were for customers, then under the regulations of our zoning code, it would still be a public parking lot, and so we would have to get a variance for that, because even though he owns the property, the potential residents could still potentially be impacted by that parking that is occurring less than 100 feet away from the building.
Would his tenants be considered customers?
Tenants would not be considered customers.
Here's my problem, Chase, because I want your building to be successful, although I could make an argument that I disagree with the BOA on the comprehensive plan and the way they interpreted it, I'm not sure how to argue against their interpretation of the zoning, because they are reading it correctly, and that's where I am right now. The zoning says that you cannot have an apartment on a main floor near a parking lot, and that's what you're asking for, and even if we made it part of the ordinance that there couldn't be windows back there, I still think that means there needs to be some work done at, at City Hall that looks at that ordinance, because I still think there's going to be an issue with an apartment on the main floor that's not locked in, because there's going to be people walking along Walnut Street. I'm not sure how, unless someone else can come up with an argument that I can't think of, I don't know how we overrule that finding. I can't think of the argument that overrules that finding, and do we not have to overrule both findings? Yes, and that's what I'm sitting here trying to do right now, and I, I don't know how to overrule it, does.
Pam?
Well, I would, I would like to make a motion that we do overrule the decision of the Board of Adjustments. I generally am not in favor of, of variances, I think that generally the ordinances that we establish need to be upheld, but in this case, because of a lot of the arguments that we've heard, I think that the Board of Adjustments may have misunderstood, and there may have a misunderstanding about the window issue. I think this is an excellent project, and I would like to see that the Council postpones further consideration and directs staff to bring this findings supporting the variance to the next meeting.
I'll second that, if it's a form of a motion.
It is.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion. Al? I just wanted to say that, you know, I, I concur with all of the discussion around here, there's some good points all around, and the Board of Adjustments did their job as they saw it, but again, there was some issues that came up about windows, and I think common sense says that while it may be defined as a public parking lot, it, it really is a little bit out of that public parking lot realm. I understand, I, I, that's why I asked Carlos the question about in the 1980s when that was changed, and I think it was changed so that we could create more parking that the public could use in our, in our core area, and this was a, you know, a way to get that done, by changing the definition of public parking, but I think in this specific case, it makes sense for us to ask staff to come up with the ideas and thoughts that will allow us to overturn the ruling of the Board of Adjustment. George?
You know, Chase, you have a good project here, it's a very, very big investment, and I, I'm not going to support it due to the fact that I do not like the idea of the parking lot that close through the alley to the building, whatever it may be over there, we all understand it, and it, I, I just don't think it would, it would be appropriate.
Hearing none? We'll vote. Which the, what are we voting on, to table it? No, there was a motion and a second to overturn the decision of the Board of Adjustment.
And turn it back to the staff to?
To prepare the findings. Everybody understand the motion? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. 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 Opposed? Aye. Okay, motion does not pass. Four to three. Okay, so move on. Point of order, do we have to then pass another motion?
I?
Do we?
Yeah, we should.
Oh, okay, sorry.
We should pass the.
Is there another motion? Somebody want to make a motion?
Just a motion to affirm the decision of the Board of Adjustment?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Al? Again, this is a very narrow issue, and I'm going to not support the motion on the table. Well, I, I won't support it either, I think that this is something that we should have supported, so. Any other discussion? Michelle?
I still, I still would like to have a discussion about how we can look at this issue from, I, that's what I wanted to discuss when you made your motion, is there a discussion about how we can overturn those two issues, but you made the motion, and so I didn't hear the arguments about how we could overturn those two arguments, so I couldn't support your, your motion, because I didn't hear the arguments.
I thought that we would be turning this back to staff to come up with the precise arguments.
I'm sorry, I needed to hear your reasoning. I think we need to know, I need to know what the reasoning is that we can turn this back to staff. Am I wrong? Don't we have to have our reasoning? Didn't you say that we need to know? Didn't we have to have the reason for turning it back to staff?
We have to have findings on both of those two items. Certainly, the motion to postpone and send it back to staff was for that purpose, to the extent that he gave us direction on that, that would be helpful as well.
So I just want, I'm sorry, I need to have further discussion about that so I could support it, and that was what I was saying when the motion was made, and we didn't have it. So that's why I couldn't support that vote, and I'm not necessarily in favor of denial of the variance as a whole, because I understand his, I think we could have amended it to say no windows in the back, we could have had this discussion about how we could have sent this back to staff, but it, it didn't happen.
Well, could there be a new motion? I mean, can there be a new motion?
Yeah, I, I wanted to have the discussion first.
We have a motion, I don't, was there a second to that?
Well, I'll withdraw, for the purpose of trying to come up with a solution.
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay. I, I would be, like to see if there was some mechanism that a contractual relationship with the owners of the private parking lots was made to the landlord of a piece of property to take the place of, of them building parking on their property. In other words, is there, is there a provision that would allow someone who doesn't have the, the physical land mass, without tearing out a floor and putting parking at the bottom of the building, that they could contract with an adjacent property for parking?
But Paul, that's not what the issue is here.
No, I understand, but.
That's a whole different issue.
And, and they're not required to have parking, so?
I understand that.
I can't imagine that we could force them to?
It might be an easy solution, is all I'm up to.
I just, I just think if you have a building downtown, one of the things you have to deal with is parking. But I'm just wondering if someone can give me an argument for why I should be supportive of this? I mean, what is your argument for overturning it? What are your findings? Other than I can make an argument on my own for the comprehensive plan, I think that's an interpretive thing, that we could say, we could, we could make that argument, but I'm, I'm, I still think maybe- But I'm, I'm, I still think maybe the parking one might be an issue.
Jerry, you wanted to say something?
But it's rather, okay, as long as Paul's talking, I'm going to say the same thing. I was quiet on it, but the reason I was against it is because I looked at it as a very good project. But it would, with the increase, as many as he's talking about, would only make an already existing parking issue a little more problematic. And we have a strange definition of a public parking lot. If Kenny's parking lot is public, that is one of the most ticketed public parking lots around. He has a hard time controlling it. He's ticketing it and, and so that is it from a, from a project standpoint. Looks like a wonderful project. I think we all agree on that. We are so close. And Paul's idea isn't the farthest off yet. I know getting down to actually the meat of the motions on the table, the past one and the next one. But if the parking issues of some contractual issue or something, we cannot force them. But that's holding up two votes and it's a legitimate concern. However, what we've got in front of us, I think there would have been a little more palatable if, and I know it's behind us and maybe we could have the attorney help us out with this one. If we'd have had the findings already in front of us, rather than we're going to vote it up either yes or no and then have staff just do it, maybe if we were staff could make recommendations and then it's voted out. Because we're really the ultimate decision makers and we were requested to make a decision off of findings that really weren't in front of us yet. Not belittling staff by any stretch, but it would have been nice to have that. Maybe that would have picked up a vote. I don't know. But I don't have a solution. I just wanted to voice my concern along with, and I'm agreeing with Councilman Delvin.
Mayor, why can't we vote as the motion that was denied moving forward? Because when those findings, after postponing this, after those findings are received, we can look at those findings and either modify the findings or go back to the other alternatives, which is to affirm the decision of the Board of Adjustments. I think, I think I'm making that interpretation correctly.
I think Carlos had something he wanted to say.
In terms of the findings, the first criteria, is it in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance? If there was a condition placed on the variance that there be no windows on the north side of the alley and that any windows facing Walnut should have some kind of tempering in order to provide privacy to the residents, you could make an argument that the intent of the ordinance is being maintained through that condition. Then the second criteria in terms of, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan does support reuse and redevelopment of buildings in the downtown area. It also supports livability. And through that condition, what you would do is you would be preserving the livability in that area of town. So it would go to satisfy the intent of the comprehensive plan as well. So I think with that condition, that condition could be key in satisfying both of those criteria, the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan.
Well, that would satisfy me, especially the tempered glass on the west side. Is that the north side? The west?
The west side, yep, correct. The Walnut side.
The side where the people could...
Yep.
Right here. Then I would be in favor of overruling the decision of the BOA and sending it back to staff with those three conditions. I mean, with the two conditions and the supporting those two findings that we agree that the comprehensive plans met and that those two conditions are met on glass, no windows on the backside and tempered glass on the west side.
Is that in the form, is that in the form of a motion?
That is.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Al. Chris?
Given that you already passed the prior motion, there needs to be a motion to reconsider first.
Then I'll make that motion first.
I'll second it.
Okay, then I restate my motion again without restating it.
We have to vote on reconsidering.
Oh, sorry.
That's right. Forgot my prior approval. Thank you.
So we have a motion to reconsider and a second discussion on that item. Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, six one. Now, is there a motion?
Yes, I, please don't make me restate it.
The same one?
But yes.
We have a motion.
I'll second it again as well.
And Al is seconding it again. Any further discussion?
So we're going back, we will revert this back to, refer this back to staff about the windows being frosted or whatever on Walnut Street?
Tempered.
Tempered, okay, tempered. And then there'd be no windows on the back?
Yes.
And that this motion will come before us at the next meeting with those findings and conclusions, right?
For us to reconsider.
Right.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Five two. Now we'll move on.
Under the Petition's Request and Communications, Item 3.1, reappointments to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Andy Bladern, Wes Hamilton, and Kendall Larson.
Move to approve those appointments.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.2, reappointments to the Recreational Waterways Commission of Dale Vetcher and Len Cross.
Move to confirm those appointments.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. Vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.3, as a request to close Zundero Street for the St. Stan's picnic on Sunday, September 20th.
Move approval of that request.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.4, as a request to close a portion of West 9th Street for a wedding on August 15th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion?
I would assume the city would provide appropriate barriers for that as well, even though they weren't...
I'm sure once this is approved, they usually do.
Whatever, as Councilman Craig said, whatever they need.
Okay. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.5, is an application for an on-sale and tax-gain liquor licenses for the Oaks Wine Bar. And Kellen Welty has applied for this liquor license to be effective September 1st through June 30th, 2016. And Ms. Welty is here if you have questions. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion or questions? Al, just, is this something new in Winona? Have, we never had a wine bar before?
That is correct.
Okay. Want to tell us what a wine bar exactly is? I'm sure not everybody knows.
Well, we will focus mainly on serving wines that people are not used to. Something new, we'll bring in new wines, we'll have tastings, we will offer flights of wine so that you can try several different wines in a flight. Small, not large glasses. And we will be, we have a, it's called a wine tapper, a bottle tapper, so that we can serve more expensive glasses, more expensive bottles by the glass so that people don't have to, if you open an expensive bottle of wine and you serve one glass, you potentially waste the entire bottle because not everyone will want to try it. And so this way, if we tap it, then it will last about a week, I believe, so that other people, so you can try a more expensive bottle of wine, which you might look at and say, I'm not going to buy that, it's too expensive, I don't know what it tastes like. We'll be able to offer to the, to our customers a variety of wines that they probably will not have seen anywhere else in Winona. And then we will have some orders. And we will also serve more of the artisan-type beers and then higher-end liquor for those people who like old fashions and older, you know, older drinks that have kind of gone by the wayside. But we won't be serving like Bud Light or Michelob or any of those things. So it'll be just for relaxing and enjoying some quiet time actually with, with some friends to talk. We won't have loud music. It's kind of what we're looking at.
When is your anticipated opening?
We're hoping to be open by September 12th for our grand opening, quiet opening before that.
Al?
What's, what's your capacity and will you be featuring, because we have a lot of great wineries around this area. Will you be featuring wines from those locations as well?
We would like to. We, because of the wineries in Wisconsin and the laws in Wisconsin, we're not sure how that will go over. But we would like to, every month or so, feature a different winery in the area and have their wines available there so that people can try those wines and not have to venture to the winery if they don't want to.
What's the capacity for seating?
About 75.
75? I didn't think you had that much room there.
Well, we're using the mezzanine also. And that will hold about 20 people-ish. Probably not that many at a time though, because we're putting in couches and chairs up there instead of tables. So in the, in the mezzanine, it'll be like a living room. And then the downstairs will have booths and a bank app.
Good, good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's. Congratulations.
Item 3.6, is a consent to sign the lease agreement to Leighton Enterprises, Inc. for the KG Radio Tower. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 3.7, is a request for a lobby parking event on August 20th. Move to approve that outdoor movie event.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1, is to ward the contract for Lyft Station Number 7 Rehab to Whoppershot Construction with a bid of $1,807,794.90.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by George. Discussion? Al?
Just a comment again, you know, it's always, to me anyway, fascinating to read the bidding and how they break down each item in the bid and what they price it at. And if, I guess I would have looked at just one part of the bid, I was going to be surprised that this particular bidder would be successful. But it came out in the end as a total to the city that I think is a pretty good price. And I look forward to getting that project underway and finished, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Under new business, item 5.1, is the Small Cities Development Program Grant Contract.
I would so move to authorize the contract to be signed by the mayor and the city clerk.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Jerry. Congratulations to the city staff for the successful application here, I would say. Any other discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 5.2, is the Walk Your City Proposal. I'd move approval of the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any further discussion? Janika, would you like to say something?
I can give a little context if you'd like, but it comes...
Okay, briefly, sure.
So this is something, my name is Janika Sobek and I'm the Director of Live Well Winona. And I'm here on behalf of the Active Living Committee, which is through the statewide health improvement program. And through our research, we found this Walk Your City initiative and it's really designed to help improve foot traffic and the reputation of walkability within our community. So this strategy of engaging people in more active commuting involves posting temporary signs that would indicate the distance to certain destinations. And we're picking three locations that we would like to work with. The first is downtown Winona, the second is the Bellevue area, and then the third, which is still being confirmed, is the St. Charles area. They will work out their own destinations. But essentially, we are, like I said, trying to encourage people as they are doing multi-stop trips to actively commute between those locations using these temporary signs. And the proposal would be to put these signs up in August and then take them down in late October.
Al?
How many signs do you anticipate using in Winona?
That's a good question. We don't have that number yet. For some of the locations that are in the proposal, it would just be one or two. For others, it might be four or five, depending on how far out we want to encourage people to be commuting. So we have a committee that can help work on some of those decisions along with guidance from city staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item 5.3, is the Development Code Update Consultant Recommendation.
I guess I would move to authorize staff to enter into the final contract with HKGI for the development of the code update.
And I will second that motion.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Discussion? Michelle?
I would just like to say thank you for this packet. I thoroughly enjoyed the information. It was very helpful in making my decision. It was really well put together. It was great. And I can see why you chose, I mean, I didn't, obviously I didn't have all the information of the other groups, but in reading this, I can see maybe why you chose them. It looks like they're a great organization. So thank you, Al, and the rest of the members of that organization or that committee.
Well, I think it's a great project. I just want to make sure that we do have public, opportunities for public input throughout the process and I'm sure that's anticipated, so.
And that was one of the key criteria, at least for me, as the council representative on this committee. I thank Wendy Davis as well, Chair of the Planning Commission, for serving on it, as well as city staff and Carlos and Mark. It was a good experience for everybody on there and learn more about form-based zoning and Euclidian zoning than I probably ever need to know. But again, it came in handy when we were evaluating these proposals and I think we'll make a good choice. I think the city will be well-served by this choice and the number of public events and opportunities for input that you'll have in the next year and a half or so as this project moves forward. It's a long time coming and I'm glad we're going to, hopefully, if this passes, go forward with it.
I think some of that language we heard earlier about what a public parking lot is just points out the need for taking a look at some of these ordinance languages. I know there's particularly one in there about massage parlors and, I mean, it's so antiquated that I'm not even sure that most of the massage therapists are even legal the way the ordinance reads. There's a lot of things to take a look.
Oh, for God's sakes.
George?
Well, some of those parlors still operate, but...
Well, I don't know.
I don't know about that either, but...
George, how do you know?
I was just going to say.
We were all given an email, I believe, yesterday and there's four questions on there. And I know, Carlos, you got that as well, too. And, you know, please incorporate those four questions into this process as you meet with these engineers.
And George, I think those people would be definitely considered stakeholders and that's part of the process, that stakeholders, general public, council members, commission members are all going to be involved in this, especially the planning commission. They'll be doing a lot of the, a lot of the legwork on this and they're ready to go.
George is referencing an email that we've all received from the Winona Housing Association. And they are, you know, I think they're on board here, but, you know, they have some concerns about their, their opportunity for weighing in on it. So it sounds like that's being addressed and I think that'll be a good part of the process. And I know they appreciated the city staff that came to their last meeting. I heard numerous comments about how helpful that was and how well the city staff handled Any other comments about this before we vote? We'll vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Kerry's.
Item five point four is the final plot for the Hiawatha Bluffs Living Subdivision.
I would move the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. She was quieter, but first. And, uh, any questions?
The biggest problem I have with this is the location. I think the project is excellent, but I think it's a bad precedence to set a project of this size on a non-public, fronting a non-public street, and it's using a, basically a cartway as its axis. And I think that every, every time I've seen this done where we're doing a piece of property behind a piece of property, ultimately, at some point in time, um, it becomes a problem. And, uh, but I just, I think it's unfortunate that a project of this caliber, that we couldn't find a better piece of land to put it on, and that's my only objection to that is its location, but I think the project is a wonderful project.
Other comments? Al?
Um, you know, I've had calls from constituents in that area expressing their concern, as, as Councilman Double has done as well, praising the project, but not real happy with its location. Um, and in talking to staff at Hiawatha, um, I know they have done their due diligence as far as looking very carefully at other places in town, and, and it just wasn't within their budget. And this property came available, and it was something that, uh, the services are needed, the facility is needed. And, um, I also, um, in response to constituents' concerns, um, with notification of the project and how it was notified to residents around the immediate area, um, have asked and, asked Hiawatha Valley to do a little more in terms of reaching out to that neighborhood and addressing their concerns, and I know that the director is taking that under advisement. I think she's here tonight if she wants to say anything about it, but really, it's just one thing that I think they'll take it forward as the project moves forward and continually upgrade the neighbors on what the project means and how it is operating and always being open to questions about how things are working. I know one of the other concerns was, as Councilperson Double mentioned, the width of the variance that was granted to allow frontage on Service Drive, it, instead of seventy-five feet, was twenty feet, and the Board of Adjustment granted that variance. Uh, one of the concerns was access to fire apparatus in that particular building if it's needed. And I checked with Fire Chief Biddle and some other fire folks that went out again today and measured that, and they had no problem in having access to that building should it be needed from Service Drive. So, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm convinced this will be a good project, and it'll be good for the neighborhood as well.
I would just like to add one other little comment.
I would hope that when another project of this caliber, and I, and I say that because it's a great project, if they have problems finding land, to come to the Port Authority, to come to the city, and let us help you find that piece of land, because I think there is land available, and it can be affordable, particularly on a project of, of this caliber. And I think we can find it. We may have to turn the rug over, but I think it's there.
I believe, I believe they have done that, gone to the city, and I don't know, Julie, if you wanted to say anything about your efforts to find another location.
Thank you. I'm Julie Hansen, Executive Director of Hiawatha Valley Mental Health Center. Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, we looked for nine to ten months, um, had very early conversations with Lucy and her staff, and because of the amount of bonding funding that I was applying for, Minnesota Housing, we were very limited in, in what we could afford. So, I totally understand concerns about where the, the facility will be located. Um, it's got some really good points in terms of access to shopping and different recreational sorts of things, but it's, it is, it's not ideal.
Yeah, and I'm just saying affordability and availability are two different issues. Affordability, we can help you with.
Yeah.
Michelle, you had something?
Well, I was just gonna say to the access point, I don't think most of your clients are probably drivers. You made reference to that. I think a lot of the people that are gonna be using that road are visitors or staff people, and I, I think the access part of that is probably, you used what you had, and, um, I think it's a good project as well and was well-needed in the community. And I think it'll be, it looks like it's gonna be a nice facility when it's done. And the land wasn't being used, and now it'll have a purpose, and I think that's a plus.
True.
Thanks.
What's your anticipated opening date?
We hope to break ground not too long after Labor Day, and, um, our general contractor is saying it'll be finished by June, so, and that's kind of a, a long window. It probably will be earlier in the spring next year.
Thank you. George?
And just to add, the Winona Housing and Redevelopment Authority also made a financial contribution towards the project, so.
We did, thank you. It's true.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Carrie's. Congratulations.
Item five point five is the Minnesota Historical Society Grants the Medal for the Masonic Temple.
I move to approve the medal of the pre-application grant.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion?
Um, we are then, by this proposal, adding another forty thousand dollars or so in additional funding for this match from the facility fund, is that correct?
I asked, Chad can answer that, and I also asked Chad to give us kind of an update on the project, and, uh, he's here tonight to do that, and I also promised that some friends of the Masoni could also have a couple minutes.
Mayor and council to answer, answer Councilman Thirley's question, yes, in, in effect, you're approving an additional forty-two thousand dollar match that would be allocated in this pre-application to the MHS. So, the facility fund is providing dollars in the 2015 budget, and we are using approximately forty-two thousand dollars to do the continuation of the structural analysis that was outlined in the Historic Structures Report that was done earlier, or actually, late in 2014. And so, we needed to use those dollars to do, to do the continuation of the structural analysis, and then, again, uh, this pre-application require, doesn't require a match, but we think it's beneficial that we offer the match with the MHS, and so, yes. That's the long answer to you are adding the forty-two thousand dollar additional match for this roofing project. Uh, update on the Masonic Temple, we are, as of last Friday, we've continued the structural analysis in the building. Uh, this past Friday, Miller Dunnwoodie Architects and Structural Engineer were in the facility, uh, looking at the steel truss that is run stage left, stage right, in stage area. We got a clean view of that steel truss, primarily because the drops are now in storage. Prior to that, it was a difficult look, so they've, they've taken a solid, um, look at that structure and are continuing their analysis on that steel beam support. Uh, the architects and structural engineer also looked at the wood trusses that, again, go east and west in the facility in the stage house, uh, so we'll know some more information in approximately four to six weeks on the wood trusses. Um, and then we also had a roof specialist through Miller and Dunnwoodie as well that looked at the actual roofing membrane on all three tiers of Masonic Temple roof. Um, I got a phone call a few minutes before the council meeting tonight saying that they did take a core sample of, uh, the roofing material and that Miller Dunnwoodie called knowing that we had the council meeting tonight to inform everyone that it does not have the proper, um, R-22, R-29 insulation value, and that we should be aware of that, and that their early estimates in the HSR then don't reflect that cost. That was one main thing that, that they wanted to point out before tonight's meeting, along with that during that core sample, the roof membrane, they are taking that sample and having it analyzed for asbestos. So, there will be some, uh, further testing done to see if any of the material on the roof in fact contains asbestos. That's where we are at. Again, approximately four to six weeks, we'll have more information as well. And then finally, just as a reminder, this is a pre-application for, with the Minnesota Historical Society. If we are approved, then we go into a final application phase that's due at the end of September. So, again, the information that we are gathering on the further structural analysis, we will have prior to the final application being due.
Which you could then modify your application based on the, uh, the results of the study, right?
At that time, we can modify our application. We will indicate in our pre-application as well that we are conducting this further analysis, and that we can provide those documents from Miller Dunnwoodie prior to the final application being due.
Michelle, you've had your hand up.
I want to make an amendment to my motion, that whether we receive this grant or not, we repair the roof using the facility fund. And I may be alone on this, but I've been sitting here for over five years now, and this has been sitting there, waiting repaired, and I believe we have the money in the facility fund. And I think if we get the grant or we don't get the grant, we need to repair this roof. So, I'm amending my motion to state that if we do not receive the grant, we still repair the roof at the Masonic Temple. I'm hoping someone will second me.
Well, I'll second that because the roof does need to be repaired.
Thank you, George.
Well, I, I agree.
Thank you, George.
The roof needs to be repaired, and we need to do that, but I think we, we don't want to put the cart before the horse here. The, the issue of the trusses needs to be addressed possibly before we do the roof. And I guess we want to know the results. We're within weeks of knowing that.
But I'm saying whether we get the grant or not, we put this roof, we pick the money from the facility fund, the money is there, we repair this roof. We've been waiting and waiting, and, and the damage is not going to be lessened by waiting longer to see if we get this grant money.
I'm not, I'm in favor of the motion, believe me, but I, I think that we may need to do some trust work first before we do the roof. That's a possibility.
Maybe. I'm not saying we do it tomorrow. I'm saying that, grant or no grant, this goes on the docket to do it, and we take it from the facility fund, whether we have this grant or not. And if that means you have to come back to us and tell us that the trusses have to be done first, then that's what happens, but we have waited and waited for this roof to be done, and I think that, that we should be done waiting.
Uh, mayor and council, just to clarify, um, I think the last caveat was the key, because the structural analysts could come back and say that the steel, you know, worst-case scenario, the steel truss in the stage house is, you know, uh, needs hundreds of thousands of dollars of work. Uh, that'd be worst-case scenario, and then I certainly would want to come back to you and let you know that information. Um, best-case scenario, it could take, you know, the HSR has indicated that it could be minimal dollars, and it, but again, when I mean minimal, it means maybe only thousands of dollars opposed to hundreds of thousands. Um, I think that'd be good information for you to have as well. Certainly, you've heard me say it several times, the roof is the key to that building, but again, this is the reason for the further analysis. If we add weight to that roof, if we tear off, if it contains asbestos, even if the wood, wood trusses and steel truss are okay, that's information that the HSR is saying that we need to have before we do anything to the roof, so.
Well, I, I'm gonna support this motion, too, because we have a citizens group here that's just eager to get out there and try and raise money to repair the drops and the support system for it, and we want to move that along as well, but the roof has got to be done before they can really do that, so.
Mayor?
Yes?
And repairing the roof, of course, would mean repairing the, uh, the beams as well, too, the trusses, correct? I mean, that, that's how I would look at it. If I'm gonna roof my house, I'm gonna make sure I got the trusses and the plywood good, and then I'll put my roof on, so I think that would all be tied into one.
Uh, true. I think that I'd feel more comfortable if you had all of that information, is all, is all I'm saying, so that you understand what those costs are, if there are significant costs to the truss or trusses. Uh, the steel truss in, above the stage really works with the rigging system, certainly has some effect on the roof as well, but that has a lot to do with the rigging system for the drops as well, so. You're correct, though. I mean, we, you don't really do a roof if the trusses are in bad shape, correct?
Al?
Um, yeah, I'm in support to maintain this building, maintain the roof, and, but I think the amendment kind of puts the cart before the horse here. Uh, I, I would hate to vote for anything that says, yeah, let's just take money out of the facilities fund. A, I don't know what the cost is. B, I don't know how much money is in the facilities fund. This is very premature, but I will support a carefully crafted motion that repairs the roof after all of these tests and, and indications have been done. It would be, it wouldn't be prudent for us to just go ahead and re-roof it without knowing those kinds of things, so, uh, you know, again, uh, to those people that support this particular building and its repair, let's take it, I know it's been a while, but government moves very slowly sometimes, and this is one of those cases, and I think deliberation is the best course in this case, and I want to know what we're talking about in costs and what we're talking about in facilities funds. You know, it's not where we have an unlimited supply of money in that fund. And I don't know exactly, quite frankly, and I'm not gonna vote for something that I don't know the balance of and the costs for.
Jerry?
Al, so everything I wanted to say, I was, I agree with him a hundred percent.
Well, you know, and reconsider, I'm reconsidering here, too. I mean, I, I'm very eager to get this roof fixed.
As we all are.
And, and I think we all are, too, but I, I do think to, a motion to allow the facility fund or suggest that we take, we just do it and take it from the facility fund without all the information at hand, um, I guess I can't support that either right now, but I think the information's coming, it's coming soon. We'll know what that is within a matter of weeks, and then we can, uh, address the issue of funding for it, so, I guess.
I know the money's there, so I'm still in favor of supporting.
But at what cost?
Well, that's what he's gonna bring back to us. If he comes back and says that the, this, he's not going to just go take all the money out and redo, it's for the roof portion only, which originally was eighty thou, eighty-five thousand dollars. Now, there's a little bit more. So, yes, I'm just showing this, that there's support there to do that. We have the money for it. It's, it's gone on for so long, I, I just.
Yeah, well, I'm frustrated along with you, too, but I think we probably can't get more, more information.
I would, I would go along with Michelle's motion if we knew what the, what it was going to cost and we knew exactly how much money we had, those two things. Without those two things, as, it's rare we ever vote on something unless we know almost exactly what it cost, but we're kind of, but I, you know, we all agree, it's gotta get done, but at what cost? And where's the money coming from? Those are the two things we always address. Now, you seem confident that the money is there. Let's, okay. Um, when we say a few weeks, a few weeks can be a lot of weeks. What are we talking, what's a date?
Uh, the Miller, or mayor and council, the Miller Dunnwoodie proposal, uh, to do the analysises, uh, and the trusses, they are indicating four to six weeks to complete the full analysis.
Four to six weeks, so no later than six to eight weeks from now, we could be deciding, we, we would, should know how much this roof is going to cost?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have you September first, pretty much.
So, let's just put it down low on September.
Really, I was looking for support from council to, to fund this project with the cash we have on hand, not to say let's just go do it right now, because obviously, we don't know what it costs. You can't spend money you don't know, but if you guys want to wait, let's wait, but I'm still in support of it.
I think what you're hearing is support for the project, we just want to know what it's going to cost.
And a date, and a date certain is September.
I wish we knew.
And I think your motion was open-ended, though.
That's what it was.
It was just do it, use the facility fund, but.
It was open-ended.
Uh, mayor and council, one clarification. Uh, Miller Dunnwoodie said four to six weeks, that's true. If this pre-application is approved, the final application to the state, or Minnesota Historical Society is due September twenty-fifth. I don't know off the top of my head when we would hear back on the grant. I would assume by the end of the calendar year. So, we may know some costs associated with repairs of the roof, we just may not know if we're successful in the grant. So, this is a pre-application, final application, and approval.
I'm agreeing with, uh, Michelle's motion of if we get money to assist this, fine. If not, what's the total price, and we're gonna figure out how to do it. Right now, we just don't know what the total price is, so what, what we're hearing from you is we should have the trust issue, which will play in the total price issue, hopefully no later than September first.
The funding issue comes later.
Mayor?
Okay.
Uh, you know, grant or no grant, we still have to fix the roof and, and the trusses and everything else, so that's what we're, that's what, that's what we're bound with, so.
That's basically what my motion was. Forget the grant, let's just agree that grant or no grant, we're gonna replace the stupid roof. Let's just, let's just replace the roof. That's what I'm trying to say here. Okay.
True, but it was.
Let's apply for the grant, but let's just replace the roof.
Well, we have a motion on an amendment. I believe it's an amendment.
Yes, I amended the, I amended the motion to say, let's apply for the grant, but let's replace the roof.
Would the city clerk read that motion back?
Well, I would know, since she was the original grant, maker of the motion and George was the original second, she is just revising her motion, so you don't need to vote on her amendment.
Okay.
But her amendment is to approve the pre-application grant and to repair the roof regardless of whether a grant is received.
Okay.
All this discussion.
Are we ready to vote on this? We don't need to vote on this, you're saying?
You don't need to vote on the amendment, but the main motion. I would know if there's no timeline, do you want?
Well, I was given a timeline. I was given a timeline of potentially December 2015.
For what?
To find out if we got the grant. But I mean, we won't know until September 1st of 2015 potentially about the cost, so that's when he'll bring it back to us and then we'll make our decision.
Yeah, you're basically saying we just need to plug it into the budget.
Right, I want it to be, when we know the cost, he'll bring it back and we will decide then if we're, what we're going to do, right? That'll be.
Well, if we make a motion to fund this project regardless of a grant, I'm not sure why they would give us a grant. You know, I mean, I think there's an opportunity or some significant amount of money that would help with this project, but if we make a motion that we're going to fund this regardless, if I was sitting on that grants committee, which I used to, I would say, you know, this money can better be spent somewhere else.
Mayor and council, just, I feel the need to elaborate on that point because this building is a long process to restore, rehabilitate. Either way, it's a long process. And we can go back to Minnesota Historical Society, we can capture other grants. But to that point, if you say to the grantor that you don't, we're going to take care of this project irregardless, I would be concerned that our application wouldn't be looked at faithfully. I just wanted to repeat that. I just, I'd have some concerns with that.
And this grant is, can only be for roofing? That's what their grant application is for?
No, this is, these are legacy dollars. This is, this specific grant is the historic and cultural grant. So this technically is smaller projects. MHS does have the state capital aid program, which we could capture larger dollar amounts, meaning according to their website, I think the largest amount they've granted in recent history is three hundred and some thousand dollars. This grant we're specifically writing for is for grants 10,000 or less. And then there is a section within this grant, not to make it more confusing, that does allow you to do $50,000 or more. But this legacy category, typically the projects are in that $10,000 range.
I'm still confused as to what we're voting on. I mean, I still don't, I mean, if we, if, you know, and we know the roof is in poor condition, we don't know how poor until we get our tests back, but we're going to go ahead and fund something without knowing what we have to fund and how we're going to do it.
No, we're not funding anything. We're agreeing that we will.
Well, that's not what I'm hearing, though.
Well, Green will replace the roof if we don't, whether we receive the grant or not.
Well, then it jeopardizes the potential for that grant and potentially other grants. I agree with the mayor and Mr. Hubel. You know, that, again, if, you know, we look like we don't need the grant, then why grant it? I think we let the process move forward and if there's a gap in the grant and the price of repair, then we go ahead and look at funding sources, if it's city dollars, if it's other sources out there.
Can we break this down into two segments? One, let's get the grant done and then let's have a resolution to put the roof on our, in the budget discussions, so that it budgeted at some point in the future, whether that's with grant or at least as a budgeted figure. We haven't decided how it's going to get funded by that point, but it's in the budget Does that solve the problem? As long as it's in the capital budget.
I don't think that solves his problem, though, because if we're budgeting for it, is that not the same thing as what I want to do?
Well, one thing is budgeting and the other thing is spending. One thing is saying we're going to do it, another thing is budgeting. There's going to be a lot of things happen between the budget and the actual expense.
Judy?
Well, I just want to explain a little bit on the budget process. I will tell you that currently there is a proposal in for this roof to be budgeted for next year. The other side of the budget is not the expenditure side, but the revenue side. And so you have to balance those out. We are looking for revenue that includes the grant and some local money.
What's the grant potential?
We are looking at 126,000.
That's fine. We'll do it that way.
So we're just going to, we're just voting on the approval of the grant?
Mm-hmm.
Is that your motion, then?
Yeah. You have a motion on the floor already.
Yep.
Are you withdrawing that motion then to clarify?
So just to be clear, the motion now that we're going to vote on is that we will, that we will, we're approving the submittal of a grant application to the Minnesota Historical Society for the roof of the Masonic Temple. Is that the motion?
Yep.
Do we all understand it?
No, I'd rather just experiment.
Okay. We'll get to that.
That'd be great.
We will. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Both, same sign. Carrie's. Thank you, Chad. And now Margaret Shaw Johnson would like to take a couple minutes and address the council regarding the Masonic Temple.
Hello, I am Margaret Johnson and I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Masonic, which is simply a citizen group whose purpose is to advocate for the Masonic, which as we all know is a city-owned facility. We think it's important to our community. I'm going to be presenting a letter, a letter of support to the council. I'm not going to read it. The mayor has told me I have five minutes, so I'm not going to take your time to read the letter. I am going to summarize it. Essentially, what we're urging the city to do is to be sure that an adequate amount of funding is included in the 2016 budget, so that actual and necessary repairs can be made to the theater and the auditorium and the Masonic itself. As I understand what has happened here today, you're talking about money that is already in the facilities fund and money for the grant. If we're going to be repairing the beam, the trusses, it's going to take more money. It's going to have to be budgeted in the 2016 budget if it's going to be funded with next year's funds. What concerns me is this Miller Dunwoody report, and now I hear it's not going to be in for another four to six weeks. That report, we should have had that report months ago. The concern that I have right now is that we'll get those numbers and I hope that they're going to be in time to be included in the 2016 budgeting process. Otherwise, we're going to be short of funding to actually fund things, repairs from that segment in 2016. What we're here to do is to urge when that budget is, budgeting is done, that you allot an adequate amount of money to fund repairs to those rigging structures, the roof, the trusses in the 2016 budget. And we also want to encourage the city to continue to find new grants and apply for them in a timely matter. We didn't solicit, this is not a petition. We didn't solicit citizens to sign this, we didn't go to businesses, we didn't knock on doors. What we did and said is we contacted a group of core organizations that we feel are likely users of this facility. Among them, they probably have thousands of audience members and supporters. We thought that was an efficient way to let you know the level of support for this facility. The support, the signatories are the Great River Shakespeare Festival, the Frozen River Film Festival, the Masons, Winona Heritage Commission, the Page Series at St. Mary's University of Minnesota, Theater to Mississippi, Midwest Music Festival, River Arts Alliance, the Department of Theater and Dance of Winona State University, and Live at the Levy. I'll be giving you that letter and you can read the contents. I have copies for everyone here. We do believe that time is of the essence for this building. It has needed repairs, as we all know, for years. In 2014, the city commissioned and paid a great deal of money for a historic structures report. It laid out a number of immediate priority items that were to be completed in 2014 and a number of high priority items that were to be completed by the middle of 2016. To the best of my knowledge, we have not completed the 2014 items and unless the council acts, it seems unlikely we will complete those two, those high priority items that were to be done in 2016. I do understand and I share Councilwoman Alexander's concerns. By further delay, which I think is not necessary, I do believe that, of course, we need these numbers before you can take affirmative action. We should have had the numbers a long time ago. My concern is the building is continuing to go downhill, our use of the building is jeopardized, and I also fear a sense of, what should I say? People become demoralized when things go on and on like this. And they've become cynical about the will and the ability of the government to solve problems. I don't like to see that cynicism and I do hear it in the community. So these are problems we can solve and I just want to, we want to urge the council to please include adequate funding in the 2016 budget and allow staff the flexibility to seek more grant money so that we can actually get some work done. So that having been said, I will present the letter, if I may approach, to the mayor. We do have a number of representatives for the organization here tonight. If anybody wants to question them, we're here. So with that, I'll sit down. Thank you.
Good, well, thank you very much. I think you heard tonight that the council does support this project and I think that's a, should be encouraged about. All right, we'll move on.
Item 5.6 is the Bud King Ice Arena Agreement.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Michelle. Discussion. I see Mr. Sloggy is here. Maybe he would like to summarize it.
Mr. Mayor, council, I'd like to thank you for the time. I read the write-up in the, in your pre-council agenda and I think that did summarize the project very well. I just wanted to add, I guess on behalf of the Hockey Association, we're very grateful to the city staff, especially Judy, Chad, and Chris, for their patience and open-mindedness throughout the process. I think we got to revision 10 on the draft agreement, so I know we were trying to patience, but it was a long process and I think we're at the, at a point of something very exciting. We like the prospect of this concept of an enhanced partnership between, between the public and our private organization to make this facility a better place. And really looking forward, we, as an association, we're looking forward to making the Ice Arena not only, an Ice Arena, not only a multi-sport facility, but truly a multi-use facility that in addition to just during the winter months, the entire community competitive from year round. And if there are further questions, based on the write-up that was in the agenda, I may have to answer any of those.
Questions? Chad?
Mayor and council, I think for the public that may be viewing tonight, just to go over the summation of the project, the council approved through the 2015 budget process what we were calling a base project. So you agreed to bond 1.2 million dollars for the replacement of a refrigeration and flooring system at Bud King Ice Arena. The city also was awarded a state grant in the amount of 150,000 dollars to assist with this project. These enhancements in that base project are expected to have a life expectancy of about 25 years. Shortly after the city approving that base project, the Hockey Association did approach the city with an offer to further enhance the facility, as Mike has alluded to. This includes an upgrade of the refrigeration system to accommodate an outdoor rink, upgrade the existing site for that outdoor rink to include concrete flooring, add a concrete floor to the inside of the existing facility, add new dashboards to the existing indoor rink, transfer those existing dashboards to the outdoor rink, add a waste heat recovery system, and construct a new refrigeration and ice resurfacing room. These additional enhancements to the facility are estimated to cost 1.8 million dollars and the association has agreed to make that contribution to the city for those enhancements. And as Mike has alluded to, we're excited about those enhancements because it does offer us a year-round facility for other events besides ice-related events. With those enhancements, the association did ask the city to review the existing agreement the city has with Hockey Association. And under this new agreement that's presented tonight, if you should approve, the Hockey Association would be the primary user of the facility under this facility use agreement. In this case, both parties have agreed to a new agreement, which will supersede the prior agreement in all respects with an effective date of April 1st, 2016. And if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any other questions or comments? I guess if there aren't any, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Both, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.7 is the Sobieski Park Building Demolition. I move to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Motion was accept the low bid, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Both, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
All right, we'll start with Al.
Thank you, Mayor. I was really, really thrilled to see these little breezers here to celebrate the band. They really reflect its heritage, really probably. They had those back in 1915 and the concert, I guess, on Wednesday will feature guest soloist Ashley Hall. And if you missed last week, Director Levi Lundak, who was here, had a little time off because one of the former directors, Dick Linder, directed one piece and directed the closing America the Beautiful. So it was, it was really a thrilling concert and as they all have been this year and in the past as well. We have a great organization in our municipal band at 100 years old. They look pretty good for 100. Also, I would like to thank the city crews for their assistance with some trees that had blocked Westlake Boulevard. I was really surprised how the extent of those trees that came down over the road were and the city crews were out there for about, I think, six to seven hours removing those trees and hopefully no more will come off the hillside for that. Also, I was talking to a person from Minnesota Department of Transportation today who thanked the city and its crews, street department, and fire department for assisting with a oil spill that was in town this morning. And the MinDOT maintenance crews were elsewhere and the city crews came through and helped MinDOT make that a secure area, so you'll see some sand, but that sand is being in the process of being picked up as well by the city. And I wish to extend greetings from a former member of this august organization who sat at that end of the table, Dieter Millimanka. He is now living, has been for a number of years, in Washington State, where he says it is hotter and drier there than it is here. That's all I have.
Dieter was just in town here a month or so ago.
Yeah, I know, he didn't call me, but.
You're still being kind. Carrie, okay, Michelle?
Pass.
Pass.
Paul?
Well, the only thing I would like to have our planning and zoning address is this issue of a public versus a private parking lot. And to put it on some discussion down the road, I can tell you, as the owner of a 6,000-square-foot parking lot, I have yet to get any assistance on its heel coating, striping, snow removal, any of those things. And I do charge people if they want to park in it, so... Except for my tenants, which is included in their rent. So, I would just hope that we would address that, that as long as I'm maintaining it as private, not public.
Okay, George?
You let the cat out of the bag. Thank you, Mayor. As I sit here, I have a direct view of John Latch over there, and he's just looking over, enjoying the meeting, and he said, "Nice bow tie."
He's talking to you.
Yeah, so...
You need a neurological exam, maybe.
Any other voices?
I've seen things.
Also, you know, when, you know, all of us, or most of us, we all cut our grass every five days, seven days, eight days, regardless of how it grows. And I want to thank a lot of people. I know that a lot of city right-of-way, it does not get cut every five or six or seven days as we mow our lawn, because it cannot. And also, the Minnesota State right-of-way. And I want to thank the people who go out with their riding moors and their weed whips, and they are cutting this grass. There's even some business people that cut the median out on Homer Road out there, and it's appreciated very, very much. So, then I just have a couple of birthday greetings. First of all, I don't believe he's up yet, but he could be. A very happy 96th birthday to Ray Greenwood, which we sang happy birthday to him last year.
You did a good job, too, I thought.
Yes, we did. So... And also, I'd like to wish a very happy sweet 16th birthday to my granddaughter, April Baneki. Everyone have a great John Latch week.
And under the consent agenda, there are four items. The approval of the minutes from July 6, a claim by the City of Winona for damage to a squad car, a claim against the city by Ann Zeller, and a claim by John Bronck.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second. Motion by Al, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Carrie's.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.